In the future. The reason stated was, under your instructional leadership, students' academic performance has continued to decline. This appears to be a hasty and perhaps unfair decision with no prior discussion about test scores, which should have led to plans for improvement. The tests for this academic year have just been administered. The scores will not be available until fall. However, the scores are an unknown quantity for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These scores should not be used in blindness to not renew a contract and say that it's because of the test scores. These scores, along with the twenty-five, twenty-six scores, will be the basis of a twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-eight renewal of the charter. The board's obligation should have been to ensure that action was being taken by the administrative team, most notably the principal, assistant principal, and director of curriculum of instruction. If indeed the board has addressed this issue and has a plan, it has not been shared with teachers and the, um, for trustees that were, I'm not trustees, but the administration that was dismissed. Certainly, parents and students should know what to expect when three trusted administrators will no longer be on site. Actually, that may be four missing familiar administrators, since I understand that the director of curriculum and instruction resigned that same day. She had been called into the office along with the director of finance and executive director, who has no direct role with instruction, and was asked to step up and help lead the school. She must have felt completely panicked knowing that her team members, the principal, the assistant principal, and the dean of students had been dismissed. That's a heavy load for one person to carry. How could the board of directors and the remaining administrators have missed the cultural norms of the working together for the good of students, respecting parents enough to communicate current and future plans in a timely way? The idea of refusing to meet with parents is unacceptable. There appears to be a lot of confusion about the number of board members currently serving on the board, whose bylaws called for eleven board members. In the most recent nine ninety, the following board members are listed. I'll not name them. There were eight of them. Um, and contacts, several of them insisted that they were no longer board members and had not been last year. And the last audit completed for KCCS referenced twelve board members. Looks like there may be no more than five current active board members. The Charter Schools Institute used to be very rigorous in its demands and monitored closely the board of directors. My prayers go out to all those affected by this inability to communicate that seems to have frozen the school for the moment. That includes the Charter Schools Institute, the board of directors, and the administrators in charge. The parents are asking for help. They need you to respond. Perhaps it's not too late to redeem the situation, but it's getting very close and closer every day. What is your plan for moving forward? Where is it? Have you lost these valuable, experienced employees forever? I'm hopeful that we can repair some of the damage and move together in love, justice, and knowledge to develop an essential plan for student success that will enhance our families, community, and the King Center Charter School. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Massey. Um, anything you want to add to that? Lois Johnson, who was also one of the founders, anything you want to add to that, Ms. Johnson? You muted, Ms. Johnson.
Um, Clayde and I have been discussing this over the past several weeks while we were both away from our, our homes. And, um, I, I just kind of want to give you just a little bit of background of how I got involved. Um, at the time, I was principal of, uh, School Ninety, uh, which was an early childhood center. It was one of the, uh, great opportunities to bring in very young children at such an early age to begin their learning experience. It's, it's one of the best magnet programs that my school district provided for the children. So I was at, uh, School Ninety, was a K- three, uh, building. Um, I was just so disheartened that our four-year-olds were coming in so developmentally delayed um, that it took a whole year to bring them up. Uh, I had a wonderful staff and we worked very hard to make sure we were able to bring the children up so that they could be successful. Um, the one thing that always bothered me, here we had all of these wonderful children, many of them in and out of so many schools, lots of transit, parents who were wonderful, but really had so many problems of their own. Um, the children just did not come ready. So my thinking was, you know, we need to do better. Why is this school? Why is the school closed three months in the summer? When we know that these children need the, the amount of learning catching up that they need to, to do so. Um, I began an advocate for year-round learning. Um, it doesn't mean that you go year-round. It just means that you, you take the calendar and there's that one opportunity when the children were out more than maybe five weeks. Um, and during those times that they were off, we had special programs. Uh, the program had special programs that would allow them to continue their learning. While I did everything I could possibly do, I could not, I had a wonderful staff, but they did not want to like this program. Well, of course, it's not about them. It's about children. And as a result, I was very frustrated. And when Dr. Massey and I found out that the state was considering having a charter school and having the ability to have our own staff, uh, not have teachers who were assigned, but teachers that really wanted to be there. We took up this opportunity to do this. And I retired in the year two thousand, after thirty-four years with the Buffalo School District. I told Clayde, no more administrating for me. You'll be the administrator. I'll be the board president. And that's how we started. Never looked back. So I'm very disheartened that we're in this situation. Um, and, um, I agree with everything. I, I had an opportunity to, to get in advance notice of what Dr. Massey was going to say today. And I just, uh, concur one hundred percent. And I appreciate being here and we will continue to help. You can count on us.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Massey and, and, and Ms. Johnson. Um, cause, uh, as school founders, y'all laid the foundation for why we are here today. And so our goal is to just make sure we can continue to build on our foundation. Uh, next, uh, we're going to hear from Dr. Keith Fromm, who helped KCCS expand into a full K- eight program and became, and become a national model for whole child education. Uh, Dr. Fromm.
Thank you, Sam. And, um, it's great to be with you both again, Lois and Clayde. And, uh, I, uh, obviously wholeheartedly endorse both of your messages. So my name is, uh, Keith Fromm. Thank you for letting me speak and inviting me here tonight. I joined the King Center Charter School Board uh, way back in two thousand and three, when it was a kindergarten through third grade school. In two thousand and ten, I left the board to lead the school's expansion to include a middle school and apply for the charter to implement the K- eight configuration that we enjoy today. Our mission was to begin the college and post-secondary preparation process early and then place our students in public and private high schools. We knew we'd continue to navigate them to career and college success. Our model then was, and it still remains, I believe to this day, that the road to college begins in kindergarten. Once we became chartered as a K- eight school and upon Dr. Massey's retirement, I became the school's second executive director. Now, I've had the blessing and the privilege to lead three historic Buffalo schools in my career. In addition to serving as KCCS's executive director, I've been the headmaster of the Elmond Franklin School, which was founded in Buffalo in eighteen ninety-five. And I've been the president of the Park School, which was founded in Buffalo in nineteen twelve. I'm also the co-founder and former CEO of one of the first national college access organizations, College Summit, which is headquartered to this day in Washington, DC. President Obama honored College Summit in two thousand and nine by sharing part of his Nobel Peace Prize with the organization. What gives me great pleasure, uh, probably the greatest pleasure of my career is that Park, Elmond Franklin, and College Summit, though very different, each in their own way, fell in love with the King Center Charter School and forged significant partnerships with it that continue to this day. These are not the only organizations that have partnered with the school over the decades. It would be notable and telling to tally the university and colleges, Houghton and Buffalo State, for instance, who are represented here on this call, and all the not-for-profits and research institutions that have worked with and studied KCCS, its students, and its staff. This list of partners would be very impressive. Several Elmond Franklin trustees have served on the KCCS board, and two of them went on to become board chairs of King Center Charter School. EFS alums have joined the KCCS faculty or they volunteered in other ways. And students from both schools visit each other's campuses to this day for sporting events. The Park School shared its science curriculum and campus with KCCS students. And every year, KCCS's best and brightest graduates enroll in Park's upper school to continue on to their high school education. In two thousand and fourteen, the Gates Foundation, which was a funder of College Summit, chose the King Center Charter School to lead its National College Knowledge Challenge, which granted millions of dollars to several ed tech companies to develop free mobile apps to help under-resourced students navigate to and through college. King Center Charter School students engaged as beta testers for many of these apps, working directly with these ed tech companies. The resulting suite of apps was chosen by the Obama administration as one of the top five educational innovations of two thousand and fourteen. And we were then invited to the White House. I recall sitting in the office of the chief of staff to then First Lady Michelle Obama, describing the typical school day at King Center Charter School, which always began with a chant. She caught, the whole school chanted together. She called in her staff and asked me to repeat the chant for all of them, which I'll do for you tonight. They say, "Today, I will learn as much as I can because I understand that college is my destiny. I will bring to school nothing but the best of me. I will leave at the door my problems from before, and I will never, ever quit because I've got grit." The White House staff was delighted. So I asked, what attracted all these people and all these prestigious institutions to this little school on Buffalo's east side? I think the answer is this. If you think of a person as a three-legged stool composed of mind, body, and spirit, and then you reflect on the American educational system and observe a typical school day, you will quickly realize that the system spends the bulk of its time and money on a narrow, purely cognitive understanding of the mind and then tries to measure that investment with very narrow standardized testing. It spends some, but not nearly enough time and resources on strengthening the body. And it spends no, zero time, spends no time at all on the student's spirit and every student's desire to find meaning in their lives. The King Center Charter School, true to Dr. Massey and Lois Johnson's original vision, devoted equal time to integrating these three legs. The school's time, talent, and treasury were spent deliberately and strategically on the whole student, including their sense of purpose in the world and their connection to their community. The results did not always show up in the numbers because there's no test for purposeful action except to live a life well-lived. And I love the alumni of the King Center Charter Schools because they do leave, uh, live and lead a life well-lived. But the approach was tangible once you experienced it and markedly, and markedly different, as Lois Johnson just described, from other places once you visited the school. You could feel it and you could hear it and you could witness it once you entered the building. It bled through everything we did like a dye spreading through a white linen shirt. The culture of the King Center Charter School was always a marriage of love and strategy. The board engaged in careful fiscal management and data-driven curricular planning so that the culture of love and caring and purposeful action could thrive. This educational, cultural concoction not only attracted experts like Uni- New York University Professor Gabrielle Integan, who wrote about King Center Charter School in her bestselling book, Rethinking Positive Thinking, but it also attracted a diverse faculty of talented young teachers who combined exquisite classroom management and pedagogical techniques with a fired-up passion for equity and social justice with love in their hearts and always a grinning sense of fun, too. So many of them dedicated their careers and lives to the King Center Charter School. So what a shame it is to lose this gem of a school in Buffalo. We're here tonight, visitations from the past, fighters in the present, children from the future, because we know how special this school was and it remains that way. For twenty-five years, the King Center Charter School has remained a place for fulfilling spirits, expanding minds, and healthy bodies because of the connected chain of leaders and teachers who ensured its continuity of values and practices. We cannot, and we should not now, just sever these links seemingly without reason or purpose.
Wow. Thank you so much, Dr. Fromm. Um, what a powerful reminder of just the path that King Center Shire School has traveled. And it's even more important that we, you know, come together and make sure that we don't, you know, sit by passively and let anything happen to cause us to lose that important legacy. Um, our next speaker will be Ms. Antoinette Bradford, who, who's led KCCS as the principal for ten years and served for seventeen. Tonight, she speaks on behalf of herself. Her fellow administrators, Joel Lynn Thurman, Brandon Thurman, and Jessica Schaefer.
Good evening. My name is Antoinette Bradford, and I have been a part of King Center Charter School for seventeen years, ten years as the principal. I had the honor of serving the children, the families, and working with a dedicated staff of King Center Charter School. Our school was founded on a promise that parents, educators, and the community will stand together to create a beacon of hope for every child who walk through our doors. We built more than a school. We built the family. We care for the whole student, mind, heart, body, and spirit. And we care for their families because when a family is supported, a child's potential has no limit. The promise worked. For twenty-five years, KCCS was a place of stability, inspiration, and trust. But over the last several years, that foundation had been steadily undermined by poor governance, retaliation against those who spoke out, and the silencing of voices that should have been valued most. These actions dismantled a thriving, mission-driven community, both culturally and financially. In two thousand and nineteen, a new executive director took leadership. While supported by a consultant, she rejected the collaborative culture that had sustained the school for decades. By two thousand and twenty-one, we saw that respected leaders and teachers resign due to a hostile work environment. We brought our concerns about morale, transparency, and governance, compliance, to the board repeatedly. We were met with silence, or worse, dismissal. In June two thousand and twenty-three, when over a dozen teachers came to speak at a board meeting, the board president told them that their voices didn't matter. By two thousand and twenty-four, the environment had become toxic. Teachers issued a formal vote of no confidence in the executive director. For the first time in the school's history, after twenty-five years without one, teachers formed a union, not out of desire, but out of the necessity to protect themselves from governance abuse. In early two thousand and twenty-five, working to, conditions deteriorated further. Classroom swung between fifty-five degrees to ninety degrees. Staff contacted OSHA. Financial transparency disappeared. Programs were canceled without notice, even noticing the leadership. Then came June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, the day of eighth grade graduation. During school hours, while students and families were celebrating, the board called us to a meeting. And without warning, I was terminated for cause, without severance. Joel Lynn, assistant principal, role was eliminated. Brandon, dean of students, role was eliminated. And minutes later, Jessica, our director of curriculum and instruction, resigned to protest. In one day, the school lost over sixty years of combined leadership and institutional knowledge, people who knew every child, every family, and every story. Why are we speaking out? We are not here because we lost our jobs. We are here because we refuse to lose our school. Our concern is for the current students and staff and for the future of KCCS. Staff have already spoken clearly through a union vote and a vote of no confidence that the board's direction is wrong. If we do not stand up now and correct the course, the school will remain on a path towards deterioration. We are fighting to give KCCS its best chance at survival, to restore the stability, trust, leadership that has been ripped away. We respectfully call on the SUNY Charter School Institute to investigate these governance practices, ensure compliance with bylaws, and restore accountability so that no future leader, staff member, or parent or child experience what our community has endured. We urge the reconstitution of the board of trustees with members who reflect the community, understand education, and will put students first. KCCS has been a light on the east side for twenty-five years. That light is flickering. We cannot allow it to go out, not for politics, not for pride, and certainly not for the sake of poor governance. Our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Bradford. Um, now we will hear from former board member and education professor, Julie Henry, who will speak about the importance of governance that reflects the community and serves the best interest of our students. And she will also, um, have presenting with her Sheri Weber. Julie.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rhodes. I think you know I respect you more than any administrator I've ever worked with. You lead with love, and that's how you change lives. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and other board members in support of the leaders of King Center Charter School who lost their positions. Many of us are education professors who served on the board of trustees in the past and place our teacher candidates in that school because we want our teacher candidates to learn how to be change agents. And I see you Mary Tessa on here, one of our teacher candidates who became, uh, a teacher at the school and makes us so proud. In our roles as education professors, we have the privilege to enter many elementary schools that host our teacher candidates. King Center Charter School has always stood out as the school that has the most warm, welcoming, and supportive experience for students, families, teacher candidates, and teachers. The school does a fantastic job meeting the needs of the children and families in their school. The leaders of this school are extremely competent and committed to excellence. They have organized this curriculum, organized this school community to foster the best possible learning environment. The student growth that they have fostered has inspired us to send our teacher candidates here to learn from the staff in this school. Sadly, there are many schools where the leaders are out of touch with their staff and with families. In contrast, King Center Charter School always had a principal that knew every student, every family, every teacher, extended herself three hundred and sixty-five days a year to assure that every person in that building was getting the support needed. The assistant principal was visible and involved in the daily life of the school and making sure that everybody had the tools they needed to be successful. The dean of students had the expertise and passion to build real relationships with students who were facing great challenges and help them overcome those challenges and reach their potential as learners and community members. It is absolutely tragic to know that these outstanding leaders have been dismissed from the school. They have our strongest support, and we completely reject this decision. We have submitted a slate of twelve volunteers who are willing to serve on the board of trustees. This slate includes former board members, alumni, parents, community leaders, all who are prepared to work with returning administrators to restore stability and excellence at King Center Charter School. This is a diverse and invested team with the expertise and commitment to step up and serve. And I am hopeful that we will get the opportunity to do this for the benefit of the children and families of King Center Charter School. And Sheri Weber wanted to add something.
Thank you, Julie. I support everything that Dr. Henry has to say. Just wanted to say a couple of things about my involvement with the school, both as a, uh, past board member and as a college professor at Buffalo State College. It's an honor to be here tonight as a former board member of King Center Charter. School holds a very special place in my heart, not only for the incredible impact it has had on its students, but also for the vision it continually upheld, focusing on the whole child. As someone who has been deeply involved in the growth and success of King Center, I remain committed to its mission and here tonight to show my support for the bright future that hopefully will lie ahead. During my time at King Center Charter, approximately over ten years, I had the privilege of leading a Saturday morning book club that welcomed more than thirty-five to forty children each Saturday morning. This initiative, a joint investment between myself and Buffalo State, served as a meaningful contribution to King Center Charter community by fostering a love of reading and strengthening literacy skills outside the traditional school week. The program not only provided academic enrichment, but also created a joyful, engaging space where students and parents and my students could connect with literature and one another. I'm deeply committed, again, to seeing King Center remain open so that its mission and the advancement of literary education of its children can continue to grow and positively impact the future for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Henry, Dr. Weber. Um, it is so important, um, what you shared, uh, uh, that there is a group of committed educators that are willing to be part of a, a board going forward. Um, most people don't realize, but if you look at King Center's current board of directors, there is no one with education experience. Um, we, we went from a, a governance body that was full of educators and educator experience to a governance body that has five people and none of which, um, have worked in school or have any experience, um, you know, in an education institution, making decisions about the future of our, of the school. Um, so with that, um, we want to call our next speaker, who is our parent leader, who has committed. Um, and she will share her family's personal journey um, through these changes, Keisha Austin.
Good evening, everyone, again. Please excuse my hoarseness. Um, regardless of my sickness, I was going to be here to tell my side of things. I have a, imagine just turn, my oldest daughter, imagine just turned twenty-one years old. So you have to understand, she started King Center and kindergarten. And the reason we chose King Center Charter School, and I will say chose, and I'll get back to that later because it was a choice. Um, it was an intentional choice. As my daughter was dealing with some issues coming out of Buffalo Hearing and Speech Center, twenty-three-week preemie. She weighed one pound, seven ounces. Um, the doctor said she was not going to leave the hospital. But God, right? Not only did she leave the hospital, she left- Not only did she leave the hospital, she left before they ever thought she would. And she excelled in every way possible since the time she's been born. So I knew when it came time for her to leave Buffalo Hearing and Speech Center, to be in a school that would provide her the services to help her continue to be successful, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy. When I came across the King Center Charter School at an open house or a school fair, the first thing they told me was she'll get everything. She'll get everything she needs at King Center Charter School. She'll get her therapy. We work very closely with Buffalo Hearing and Speech Center. She'll get her speech. We push in, we pull out. And she will be successful. My daughter just turned twenty-one and y'all, I'm only twenty-five, so I'm not really sure how I have a twenty-one-year-old daughter, but but God, right? But she just turned twenty-one. She's in her third year of college. And all of that, a majority of that comes from King Center Charter School. When they, when she started, they were over on Rich and Genesee. She loved going to school. She loved those Saturdays, those readings on Saturdays. I used to be like, you wanna go to school on Saturday? Yes, mommy, I love school. I love, I wanna go. In first grade, we had an issue with some bullying. I went right to Dr. Massey. There was no questions about it. We're gonna have a meeting. We're gonna figure this out. And it was taken care of immediately. First day of second grade, Dr. Fromm is at the door, greeting everyone. I said, Dr. Fromm, my daughter had some issues with bullying last year. I don't want that to happen again this year. He said it won't. He said, my kids had issues with bullying when they were kids. I don't, I don't tolerate that. You tell her to come, come to me. Don't go to anyone else. She comes to me. So my history with King Center Charter School is long. It's wonderful. It's love. It's my family. And now I have my ten-year-old, and we're not gonna talk about the age gap, but I have my ten-year-old who is now going into fifth grade. And I want her to be able to go to fifth grade and continue at King Center, but not under what's currently happening. The decision to remove Principal Rhodes, Assistant Principal Thurman, and Dean of Students, Mr. Thurman, along with the resignation of Ms. Schaefer, it deeply affected my family and myself. When I, when I got the phone call, and, and this is how close we are, I had teachers calling me, texting me, telling me what was going on, saying you need to do something. And I said, what can I do? They said, we know you love the school. Use your voice. I'm thinking, do I really have a voice? That like, who, who can? They're like, yes, we know you love the school. We know that you've been a part of this school for fifteen years. Even when, even the gap between Imagine leaving eighth grade and before Angel got there, they were checking in on me. They were, they've gotten me through the loss of a child. They got my daughter through the loss of her, of her great-grandmother. They made sure she had counseling. They made sure that she was okay. They called me. Joellen, I heard. Look, they invited me to the beach a couple of weeks ago. I couldn't make it, but that's the relationship that we have. This is my family. And so it hurt me. It hurt my daughter because she was in the, she was in the office when I got the phone call. And when I came home and told my oldest daughter, she was distraught as well. These individuals have played a pivotal role in nurturing my children, both academically and personally. They have grown, I have seen so much growth of Imagine and Angel just from the school that they attend and the, and the individuals that they encounter every day because they treat their, they treat my kids like they're their kids. You don't get that everywhere. There's, there's schools where teachers really, they come in, they do their lesson, they go home. They couldn't care less about, you know, what the kids are, what's going on at home or what their parents are doing. And that leads me to a certain executive director who, if ten kids were standing in front of her, she probably couldn't name two of them. But yet you have Ms. Thurman, Mr. Thurman, Ms. Rhodes. They know, they know not only the students' names, they know the parents, they know the siblings, they know the aunties, they know what happened the other day, they know that somebody was getting married, they know the kids went on vacation. They know everything because they take the time to talk to their students, to love on their students. Some of the hugs that they give are the holy hugs that these kids get every day. So to, so to make the rash, rash decision to terminate positions that are, that are no longer needed or say that your contract is who did you make these decisions with? The board was not even in compliance. Did you talk to the parents? Because once again, I choose to send my kids to King Center Charter School. I live in Buffalo. I have a school my kids could go to, but my choice is to go to King Center because of the first experience I had. And I wanted to have my, my second daughter have the same experience, and I want generations forward to have the same experience. I joke with them all the time. I say, what am I gonna do when, when Angel graduates eighth grade? They say, you're gonna still come here. You're honorary teacher. You, you're part of this. And I, I want to do that. I want to continue because I think every child who goes to King Center should have the same education, the same love, the same caring that they've been giving for the last twenty-five years. My ex-sister-in-law went to King Center Charter School. I've known, I've met people that are like, oh, yeah, I went there. My kids went. There are students that have their kids going there now. They are, have become adults, and now they said, I'm sending my child to the same school that I went to. Where do you find that at? You don't find that everywhere, and you're not gonna find that anywhere. But if we don't get assistance from SUNY Charter to get things back in order, the future generations are not gonna get the same King Center if there is even a King Center. So I'm coming, and I'm asking that they make the decision now to listen to what we're saying and understand it's not just about people being, losing their jobs. These are about the babies. Ultimately, it's about my children, the children that are there, and the children that are coming after. They need the same thing that my oldest daughter got. I'm saddened. I wa- I was sad. I was sad in the beginning. I was sad. I was frustrated. I was angry. But now I have a lot of hope. I have a lot of hope. We've come very far. We continue to come far. We have seventy people on this meeting right now who could be doing other things on this beautiful day. I could have said, you know what? I don't feel good. I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm gonna rest and let them take care of it. No, we've come too far. I know I sound like I got a frog in my throat right now, y'all. I, I don't care. I love King Center Charter School. My kids love King Center Charter School. It's my family, and I'm always gonna go to bat for my family. So I'm using my voice to say, SUNY, are y'all listening to us? You need to help us. You need to right this wrong. And we're asking y'all to do that today, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, for us and for these kids at King Center Charter School. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Keisha, for those passionate words. And I, I should also tell everybody that one of the requirements for King Center is to have a parent representative on the board. And you have somebody like Keisha who's willing to sit on the board. This is a board that has not had the required number of board members, and it has somebody like Keisha sitting right there that every year at the annual meeting, they had a responsibility to fill vacancies. They have not filled vacancies when you have such qualified parent right available to us. So we thank you, Keisha, for your commitment. We are next going to have Latasha Daniels speak, but before Latasha speaks, the attorney asks if he can make a, a statement. So Greg, you need to make a statement before she speaks?
I, I can wait. Okay, thank you very much, Sam.
Thanks. Go ahead, Latasha.
All right, thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I come to you as a concerned parent of the King Center Charter School for over seven years. I'm here to express my full support for the immediate reinstatement of Principal, of the principal, the assistant principal, the dean of students, and also Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and the urge you to correct what I believe as a parent and a member of the community to what I believe is a wrongful termination. Antonette Radford has been more than an administrator to this school. She has been a mentor. So sorry. A visionary, a source of stability and trust for my children, all students, staff, and families alike like myself. Under her leadership, we've seen not just rise in academic performance, but a stronger school culture. One where every student and my children have felt seen, supported, and encouraged to thrive. Their removal not only shocked our community, but it deeply hurt it. We understand that mistakes can happen and sometimes decisions made without full context. But with, you know, new facts emerging, or when a decision appears to be made in haste or under pressure, the right thing to do is to revisit it with honesty and integrity. The voices of teachers, parents like myself, and students have made it clear. Antonette Radford, Joellen Thurman, Brandon Thurman, was and still is the heart of this school. Their track record speaks louder than anything. The overwhelming support from this community is a testament to their character and impact. To those who have the authority to make the right decision and make this right, we are not asking for a favor. We're just asking for justice. We're asking that you honor the truth, listen to the people most affected, and bring back the leaders who never stopped believing in this school, even when the school system may have stopped believing in them. We want to show the students and the community what integrity looks like. Let's teach them that we just don't talk about fairness. We act on it. I can say personally, my child, who has been with KCS since kindergarten, it was a choice to attend KCS. I could have went to Maryvale School District. I could have went anywhere. I chose KCS. I chose KCS because of the community that it brought, especially for my children, for my families. Now I'm a Gigi, not a grandma, but a Gigi. I'll make it very clear. Gigi. My grandchildren, generations to come. So that's right. So generations to come. So I, I wholeheartedly support and encourage of the, for the re- immediate reinstatement of what I believe is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Daniels. We've heard from former board members, founders, administrators, parents. And we're gonna come back and hear from some more parents. We're gonna wrap it up, but we also want to listen to teachers. So next will be Mary Tess Wright, a kindergarten teacher whose career was shaped by the KCCS's supportive leadership and who has witnessed firsthand the impact of these recent changes. Mary Tess Wright.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Mary Tess Wright, and I'm a proud third-year kindergarten teacher at King Center Charter School. My journey with King Center began during my senior year of college. I was originally scheduled to complete my math field hours at a different school, but due to limited placements, several of my classmates and I were left without assignments. That's when King Center stepped in. The administration welcomed us with open arms, and within just a few visits, I knew I had found something special. Even though I only spent a few hours each week at the school for five short weeks, I instantly connected with the mission, the scholars, and most of all, the people. I was so inspired by what I experienced that I begged my department dean to let me complete my student teaching at King Center, and thankfully she agreed. And also shout out to Dr. Henry for agreeing to be my supervisor because I did not have a supervisor. During that time, I had the honor of learning from and witnessing the leadership of Mrs. Rhodes, Mrs. Thurman, Mr. Thurman, and Mrs. Schaefer. These four individuals were the heartbeat of King Center. Each of them impacted me in a personal and lasting way. Mrs. Rhodes was always an encouraging voice. Her words lifted me up on hard days and reminded me why I chose this profession. Mrs. Thurman was the definition of tough love. She supported me in ways that pushed me to be better. She didn't coddle, she challenged, and I'm stronger, I'm a stronger teacher because of it. Mr. Thurman formed real, authentic relationships with my students who struggled the most. They wanted to do better because they didn't want to let him down, and that kind of connection matters more than people realize. And Mrs. Schaefer saw me as a real educator from day one. She encouraged my teaching style, trusted my instincts, and helped me learn, lean into my strengths with confidence. These were not just employees. They were mentors, advocates, and foundational pillars of the school. Their dedication to the students, investment in staff, and passion for the work created in an environment where both children and educators could thrive. Their leadership shaped who I am as a teacher and affirmed me that this was a school community that I wanted to grow in. That is why what happened following our most recent eighth grade graduation has been heartbreaking. Without warning or explanation, the board made the decision to terminate Mrs. Rhodes, Mrs. Thurman, and Mr. Thurman. Shortly after, Mrs. Schaefer, another deeply impactful leader, resigned. The sudden loss of these four voices has sent shockwaves through our school community. I chose King Center because I wanted to work in a school that cared about kids. These leaders embodied that care every single day. But the board's actions have shown the exact opposite. Excuse me. They did not care about kids, not the families they disappointed, the hearts they've broken, or the relationships they've dismantled. My heart breaks for the students returning in September to their absence, for the alumni who won't see them in the fall, and for the new students who will never get the opportunity to know their love, all because of a decision made by people who don't care anything about them. To be honest, I'm not looking forward to the upcoming school year. The board's decision has torn a family apart. And while the theme for the year is do it for the kids, the truth is, this may be one of the most damaging things that they could have done to those, to those students. The very people who showed up for our students with consistency, love, and high expectations were stripped away without warning. Our kids deserve better. As someone whose career was shaped by their guidance, I cannot stay silent. I am now a part of an organizing committee committed to seek injustice, accountability, and transparency. We are raising our voices on behalf of our students, our staff, and the community that deserves better. We believe that a school is only as strong as the people who pour into it, and we will continue to fight for a future where those people are valued, protected, and heard. I fought to be at King Center, and now I'm fighting for King Center.
Wow, thank you so much, Ms. Wright. Now we will have here from Ms. Courtney Marshall, a thirteen-year kindergarten teacher who will speak about the deep cultural and community roots KCCS has built and what is at risk. Ms. Marshall.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Marshall, and I have had the privilege of teaching kindergarten here at King Center Charter School for thirteen years. That's thirteen years of watching little ones take their very first steps into the world of learning. And every single one of those years has, was guided and supported by the leadership that we recently lost. It was our very own beloved principal, Mrs. Rhodes, who saw something in me and offered me the position as a kindergarten teacher. It wasn't just a job. It was a turning point. You looked beyond a resume. You looked past my nerves and uncertainty, and you saw heart. You saw potential. You saw me, and you gave me a chance. You supported me through some of the most difficult and challenging days and celebrated my achievements. There are a few honors greater in this profession than being entrusted with a child. But to be chosen intentionally, wholeheartedly, by not just colleagues, but by two respected leaders of this school, to teach their son, that changed me. You didn't see me as a teacher. You saw something in me that made you believe that I was the right person to help shape your son's first school experience. That kind of trust is rare and so sacred. Today, I speak not just as a teacher, but as someone who has been shaped professionally and personally by the leadership of our former principal, assistant principal, dean of students, and our director of curriculum and instruction. Their absence is not just an administrative shift. It is a deep and resounding loss that echoes in every corner of this building. These weren't just job titles. These were people who stayed long after the school day ended, who knew the names of every student, every sibling, every family story, who wiped tears, calmed storms, celebrated small victories, and made us all, staff, students, and families feel seen and valued. They were here through the good days and the impossible ones, through pandemics, budget cuts, and personal challenges, and they stayed. They gave their hearts to this school. Now we find ourselves in the wake of a decision. We neither ask for nor understand the termination of three leaders, each with thirteen to over twenty years of service. And while I cannot speak for the forces behind this choice, I could speak to its consequences. Our students feel it. The staff feels it. Families feel it. There's a silence where laughter once lived and a void where guidance once stood. We are a family here, and when you take out the pillars of a home, the structure trembles. This isn't about a lot, a job loss. It's about the identity of a school, the culture, the heartbeat, the trust that was carefully built over a decade. This is about honoring the people who held us together. We know the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year is on the horizon. And we have been told that our theme for this school year is to do it for the kids. I encourage you all instead to don't do it to our kids. We know that we must move forward for the sake of our students, but forward should not mean forgetting. We believe with full hearts and clear minds that our school is best when it includes the leadership that helped build it. We respectfully and passionately call for the reinstatement of our principal, assistant principal, and our dean of students. Because this isn't about leadership, this is about legacy. This is about justice, and it is about love for our school, our students, and the people who gave everything to it. We hope decision makers will not hear just the words of a kindergarten teacher today, but the voices of every classroom, every child, every colleague, and every parent who feels the absence and still believes in the power of what we built together. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much, Ms. Marshall. We appreciate your passionate words. Um, we next will have Ms. Kate Kozlowski, a speech language pathologist at K C C S for over twelve years, sharing her perspective on the relationships and trust that have been lost. Ms. Kozlowski.
Hi, thank you so much. So my name is Katie, as Mr. Radford said. Um, I'm a speech language pathologist at King Center Charter School. I have been at King Center for over twelve years. I started at King Center as a one-to-one aide for a student who needed some assistance. Um, and I was inspired by King Center to go back to school and get my master's in speech. And as soon as I was done getting my master's, King Center is where I wanted to be. Um, I had other options, but I wanted to go back there because of the community, um, because of the passion, because of the love, um, and the commitment to the students. Um, the decision to terminate Ms. Rhodes, Mr. and Mrs. Thurman, and the subsequent resignation of Mrs. Schaefer has impacted me greatly, but most importantly, it will have a profound impact on the students and the culture of King Center. You will surely, and you have heard it so far, and you will hear it again, King Center isn't just a school, it is a family, and the four aforementioned leaders are the backbone of that family. Students and staff were supported, encouraged, and cared for under their leadership. Their relationships with staff as well as students went far beyond the classroom, which was apparent daily through their consistent presence throughout the school, check-ins both personally and professionally, and a very clear open door policy. The relationships that they built and nurtured led to feelings of security and stability that contributed to the success and motivation of countless students. King Center was a safe space for many students as well as staff members, and that was ripped away from all of us on June twenty-fourth. We are now left questioning the future of our school, and the safety, well-being, and education of our students hangs in the balance. It is my firm belief that the future at Kings, of King Center is at stake. The lack of transparency, trust, and confidence in the board and the current administration has bred feelings of unease, anger, and extreme distrust. That is not a formula for a healthy environment for anybody. Our students, families, and staff deserve better than not having any answers about the future of our school, and we certainly deserve better than having no clear direction or leadership. The focus of our school has always been on our students and a vision for a strong future for each of them. Without caring student-focused leadership, I worry that that vision will be erased. So I am calling for the reinstatement of the four leaders that have been mercilessly and um nonsensically let go. Um, and I hope that some changes will be uh made to reinstate those leaders. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kozlowski. We appreciate your kind words. Um, we will next have one of our parent leaders who has stepped up and really provided some great leadership. Um, he will speak about how these changes have affected his family. Jamal Davis is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. Um, I'm very humbled to be able to speak today on behalf of a, a beautiful team of leadership. A little bit about myself, I am a proud, proud Damon alum. My master's is in leadership and innovation with a focus in business. So, but when we talk about leadership, I, I understand it from a study sense. And um, when I say that the four individuals who have been identified, um, who have been wrongfully removed from the positions, they model and live leadership in a way that I was able to quote this when working on my thesis defense for my uh degree in leadership. But with our team and everybody online, I thought it'd be important for them to have a visual of what the impact on my family would look like. So I'm sharing right now my screen that starts with this picture. This picture says more than anything that I could potentially say. It is my daughter, that's my daughter there. She was in kindergarten at the time. My daughter struggles mightily with adjustments and things of that nature. Um, at the time, you know, I have custody of my daughter, you know, her mother wasn't active in her life, and um the, the Thurmans and the love that they show my daughter, just as far as being patient, being understanding, and, and really, really, really advocating true and authentic love is something that I will always and forever be grateful for. And it's no way that I can ever repay you for just what the foundation that you laid in, into her. She's actually on this call tonight, guys, so she can see you guys, but I just wanted to say that this is my journey of how K C C S began for me. About, and me and my family. This next picture, oops, excuse me, is how it ended. On June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, this picture was actually the last picture uh said one of the big four in this picture was taken before she was called into her meeting for her removal. But when I tell you that if it was not for the work, if it was not for the individual in this picture, I don't think the reality of graduation would be possible because of uh my daughter's struggles and, and things of that nature. So I just want to always, always, always refer to the love and to the, to the care that was shown and that dynamic. Um, things that are off screen, um, when we talk about leadership and we talk about the top, uh, Ms. Rhodes Radford, who the street that the school is currently on is named after. If that doesn't say a lot about the character, the integrity, and the leadership of the individual, it, it mean that I, there's nothing more that I can say. But um, for, I have another child who also graduated on June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. They're not twins, they're, they're just really close in age. And um, when we talk about academic performance from my son's first day at kindergarten, and Ms. Rhodes met him at the door and had him straighten himself out, because he was the messy Marvin, he, you know, had to keep the uniform and stuff. That, 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 that constant presence of being there, being reliable, and showing like the real love that's needed is what got him accepted into a private high school up here in Buffalo, New York. It, it, it started that foundation, it helped him set a standard for himself, it helped him identify what goals are and how he can attain it to win. That day, my family, when we, when we received those, those entrance and those acceptance letters, it was just a joyous occasion all around. So what I want to do is I really want to say thank you to the big four. I want to say thank you to um, uh, prior leadership of K C C S and trusting and believing in them because they truly are in the heart and soul of the current institution. And it is my family's belief that they should be reinstated without hesitation, and they should be allowed to get back into affecting the lives of our children in our community. And with that, thank you, and I turn it over back to Mr. Radford.
Wow, that was really, really powerful, Jamal. Uh, uh, and you, like you said, a picture is, is worth a thousand words, and so thank you so much for that story. Um, we gonna, uh, but we, we are actually, it, it's cost us to have our lawyer on this phone right now, uh, on this call right now. So, and he's been on here for a while. So I'm gonna have one more parent, Rebecca Rodriguez, speaking. Then we'll bring him on, and then we'll let anybody, we'll open it up for the public comment. Um, but Rebecca Rodriguez.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rebecca Rodriguez, and um, I just, I am a staff member. I am also a parent at um, K C C S, and so I would just like to speak a little bit about the emotional impact and, or the impact in general of what happened um, on our, on our graduation day. Uh, four pillar, four pillars of our school is gone. Principal Rhodes, Assistant Principal Joellen Thurman, and the Dean of Students Brandon Thurman, that, and also the Director of Curriculum Jess Schaefer. Together, they devoted over fifty years to a, to building a safe, loving, and supportive environment for our children and staff. They didn't just do their jobs, they poured their hearts into the community and into our students. They knew every student by name, celebrated every milestone, and stood by us through every challenge. They fought tirelessly for our kids' success, defended when, defended them when no one else had, and modeled what true leadership and compassion looks like. In a matter of days, these, in a matter of a day, these three were wrongfully terminated and one resigned in solidarity. As a staff member and a parent, I can say without hesitation, their absence has left a hole that simply cannot be filled by new hires. These were not just administrators, they were the heart and soul of our, the heart and soul of our school. They were our daily support, our mentors, and the ones who kept us, who kept the morale alive for us, both students and staff. It's not just a staffing change. This is a devastating blow to our school family. Our children have lost their fiercest advocates and role models. We, as a staff and parents, have lost leaders who inspired us and stood beside us through every storm. Now every parent, student, and staff member are left to face September filled with uncertainty, heartbreak, and unanswered questions. Our school will never be the same without them, and the silence from those responsible speaks volumes, speaks volumes. We owe it to our students, to ourselves, and to the legacy of these four remarkable individuals to demand answers, accountability, and the respect this community deserves. Dealing with all of these individuals on a personal level, I can tell you that they are some of the most trusted and efficient administration I've ever worked with and ever dealt with as a parent. Um, us losing them has been, i- 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 has been such a heavy loss that um, moving, I don't, I don't know what we're going to do moving forward. And so I just thank you guys for listening to me.
And thank you so much for, for sharing, uh, Rebecca. Um, and we appreciate all the administrators, the board members, former board members, founders, teachers, parents who have shared. Um, we will open it up to public comment, but before we open up to public comment, I want to give our attorney Greg Zinni the opportunity to share anything that he thinks is important to share at this time. Attorney Zinni.
Hi, I want to thank everyone first for their experience. I guess ideas of what is happening at King Charter. Um, I am in a restaurant, so if you hear background noise, my apologies, but I have no AC at home. And so, yeah, this is what I'm doing. Uh, today we filed an appeal of the board's decision. We filed it with the SUNY Charter of School Institute and to the media that will be made available. Uh, my email address is shezini@colleganlaw.com. My cell is seven one six five three six zero nine three. The principal media contact to be my partner, Matthew Hope, also available. Uh, but we believe strongly in the charter school initiatives. And when Sam came to us and laid out what was going on, our, our first thought was, this nonsense. The, the board took a decision, which it wasn't authorized to take, because it didn't have enough board leaders. It was obviously retaliatory. It was obviously designed to harm the school, and we stand with King Chut. Uh, and Sam, do you have any questions?
No, um, we just, at this point, we just wanted to make it clear that we are gonna take multiple strategies to make sure um, that um, we do everything we can to keep the King Center Charter School open. So we starting with administrative um, strategy, um, which is to um, ask the Charter School Institute um, to, to overturn this decision that was made, which they have the right to do. Um, we also have the administrative option of having a charter school committee of the SUNY uh Board of Trustees to intervene. Um, but um, as a last option, we can go into State Supreme Court and file Article seventy-eight um, and seek injunctive relief. So just making it
That is absolutely correct, and that is exactly what we will do.
Yeah, and so just wanted to let
Sam has been amazing. I mean, he's just, the, the number of documents he's given me and the communication, it's, it's been incredible. Sorry, Sam.
No problem. So, Mrs. Zinni, thank you, thank you for agreeing. Um, I just want to, you know, to send a shout out to Kim Diana Conley at the U B Law School, um, who recommended um, Collegan Law um, for, to, to handle this matter, because she thought it would be ideal to be able to do it, so we appreciate that. Um, but with that, what we want to do is make sure, so thank you, um, Attorney Zinni. Um, we appreciate you getting that letter in today. Um, and we looking forward to the follow-up, and we will talk with you. Uh, but again, I just want to let everybody know um, that this is this is not a, this is not, this is not free. You know what I'm saying? It's costing time, attention, and resources um, to be able to fight this battle. Um, but King Center Charter School is absolutely worth the cost that it, of, of fighting this battle. And, you know, God has provided a way, you know, to access some resources to be able to do that, and so we've committed those resources to doing whatever it takes to save this school. Um, and so with that, we want to make sure we left some time um, for people who were not I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, ju- I just said, thanks, Sam. All right. Um, I, I made shut off now. I started to exam today.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right, go ahead. Um, so we're gonna, we, if there's somebody who would like to make a comment, or if there's anybody from, huh? Uh, or if there's anybody um, from any of the legislators' office who have a question, um, we'll leave um, the floor open for questions and comments. Um, we don't have um, a lot of time we have about, we don't want to, you know, push people past the time that we set, but we do want to make it clear that um, we wanted to make a record, uh, we've made that record. Um, but is there anybody who have any questions at this point or make, want to make any additional comments? Floor is open.
Hi, Sam. You've done an amazing job, absolutely. Uh, I, I just am so, I feel so much more hopeful. And Julie and Sherry, for you to put together a slate of the board of directors, I mean, wow, that was music to my ears. That was the best thing that you could have ever done. And I just want to thank um, all the teachers, and I will be up there in September. Bennett High School is celebrating a hundred years. I will be there. Not that I'm a hundred years old, but I'm getting there. I will be there, and I will definitely stop by uh, to see all of you. And I just want to thank everyone. The parents are wonderful, all their support, all their comments, just so well received. I'm just so, so encouraged. I feel a hundred percent better.
All right, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Tittwell, on behalf of uh, April Baskin, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, no, I've got a lot of uh excellent information that I'm going to be taking back to the Senator. Thank you for having me, and um, we wish you the best.
Thank you so much. Um, I know the Majority Leader was on here earlier. She indicated that she would have to leave at six forty-five, but we do thank Majority Leader Crystal People Stokes um, for her time on here. Um, I know somebody on here is on here from SUNY CSI who's monitoring. I don't know who you are. Um, and from my understanding, they can't talk, they can listen to us, but they can't talk to uh, us, uh, because this case may, this case is coming before them. But they are able to listen, so we thank you for listening, um, and uh, you know, staying here to the very end. Um, is there anybody else who have a question or a comment before we move to close?
I have a question and comment. I put it in the chat so you can see. My question is, what are the credentials of those people who were walked out? And what are those, who is coming in as the interim? And I understand that we're doing all this talking and meeting, but school starts in, uh, in almost two weeks. So we need to make sure that transitional or that interim team is, has their, their credentials in order and how are, how are they going to be able to make that smooth transition for the next school year? If that's even possible at this point in time, because like you all said, many of you are parents and who have multiple children in this charter school. If that's even possible at this point in time, because like you all said, many of you are parenting who have multiple children in this charter school. You don't wanna be scrambling at the last minute. And you also need to bring someone in with the credentials, with that experience to be able to positively transition and also transition the climate and the culture that's already been presented in King Charter School.
Yeah, that's a Dr. McNabb. We really appreciate you raising that concern. Um, that's really one of the concerns we had in the first place. Um, one of the first things that Principal Radford said to them um, is that um, you know, this ain't about protecting her job. I- i- if, if they wanted to go a different direction, they had a right to go a different direction. It made more sense just to come sit down and let people know they wanted to go in a different direction and let them put together a transition plan to make sure that the, the, that we transition in the best interest of students. Um, but they didn't do that. They just had a knee jerk, you know, okay, everybody. I mean, could you imagine working somewhere twenty years of your life and then somebody say leave tomorrow? And I mean, just no appreciation for service, no appreciation for the family that was created. Um, and then to have basically four people, to have a board of four people make a decision for an institution that's been around for twenty years that represent this many people. I mean, it is the height of irresponsibility and not to have anybody on the board, not a person on the board who has any experience with it, working in the school, have any education background at all. Um, it's just, at this point, um, we are saying that we needs the SUNY uh, Charter School Institute to, to, just to come monitor. Go look at what's going on. Um, but we're not here just to make a complaint. We're also here with some solutions. You know, we have, you know, again, founders, former board members, you know, former executive directors, parents, community people, you know, university professors, educators, all who stand at the ready to be part of a solution going forward. So we wanna work with SUNY. We ain't, we, we ain't here to criticize. We here to say, we want to save this school. If they leave the school in his hands, I mean, this, nothing could be more obvious than this. In October, in May of last year, the staff voted no confidence in the person that they left in charge. And then in this year, in October of last year, the Board of Directors took all responsibility for the school, for the teachers in the school from the exec director and put it under the principal. Who, who, so they indicated in very clear terms that they had no confidence in the person. And then they turned around and put that person in charge um, to go forward. Um, and none of that is rational. It don't make any sense, but you know, we may have a bias. So we, we, we're asking SUNY to come in and look at it closely, understand what's going on, listen to parents, listen to administrators, listen to people who have done this before. And let's figure out what we can do in the best interest of children. And like everybody said, time is of the essence. This is, they, they're trying to run out the clock. That's the reason why they told us that they can't meet with us until September. They're gonna meet with us in the middle of September because they think some kind of way, we are going to get discouraged and just kinda walk away. Um, so everybody just to be real clear on our timeline. Um, we are going to, um, we filed our appeal with SUNY today um, for the four administrators, the parents. Um, we filed a, 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 appeal three days ago today, that we, last week, we filed an appeal to that. Um, and then if we don't hear back from SUNY by the end of this week, um, next week, we will be going into State Supreme Court to file an Article seventy-eight complaint and ask for a judge to um, bring an injunction to stop this illegally constituted board from going forward and make any future decisions. With the hope that that will force SUNY into a negotiation um, that will bring parents and people who are um, gonna be impacted by what's going on together to come up with a solution. Um, so we don't know at this point, um, what's gonna bring about the change. We just gonna faithfully get up every day and work until we get the change. Um, I just wanna say one last thing to the people um, who have been, we've had between twenty and forty people who have met every Monday since this happened. Um, they come on here every single Monday and we strategize and we organize to make sure we stay in this till we get the result that we want. So I wanna give a shout out, all of you committed, you know, um, parents and staff, um, and community members who have been part of that process. Um, I know we didn't, as we end, I know we didn't bring on students. Um, and we kinda didn't want to really focus in, we didn't want the students to be in the middle of this, right? Uh, we know the student voices matter. That's the reason why, if we did have students speak, we were only gonna have alumni speak, right? Um, because we didn't want students, um, you know, this is adult stuff that we really should take responsibility for and make sure we should protect students from. So we didn't want to, you know, put them in the middle of something. Um, so with that, it is now seven thirty. Do anybody have, before we close in prayers, anybody who want um, to uh, make any closing comments or any closing statement before we close, before we close in prayer? I see there, Ms. Dublin Cottman. Thank you so much, um, former board president, Ms. Cottman for joining us and spending time. We asked the board, people don't understand that the Board of Education is responsible for uh, the education of all the children in Buffalo, public and charter. Uh, and so to see board members who are committed to hearing um, the voice of parents, we really appreciate it. Um, um, Board Member Cottman, thank you so much. Did you wanna say anything before you go?
I just wanna say that um, I respect the process. I respect each and every one of you and um, um, I just encourage you to continue to do what you feel you have to do within your hearts. Uh, and that's what you have to do. Um, you have to stand up when we don't feel that things have been done in proper way. And you have the right. We need more people advocating for our children. So I am uh, very encouraged by this conversation and uh, thank you for inviting me.
Thank you for your ongoing advocacy for our children as well. Thank you so much. Um, all right, everybody. Um, we want you, if everybody can just, you know, um, you know, put something in the comment about what your takeaway from tonight's meeting is, what stood out for you, just so we can have that chat record. Um, everybody, before you go, just make some kind of comment about, you know, what stood out for you or what you wanna share, what's resonating with you. Just put it into the chat. Um, and we will, um, you know, stay on while people putting things into the chat. Um, but we really appreciate everybody for coming tonight. Um, we're going to um, ask Antoinette if she will close us in prayer. Um, and then, and ask people continue to put things in the chat, but go ahead, go ahead, Antoinette.
I wanted to just say thank you before I pray. Thank you on behalf of all the administrators, Jalen, Jessica and Brandon. We thank you. We appreciate you and we love King Center and we wanna see King Center around for twenty-five more years. So we thank you. Heavenly Father, we just say thank you. Thank you for our life, health and strength. God, thank you for your grace and mercy. Thank you for everyone that showed up. God, even the alumnis, we thank you for them. We thank you for the voices that were heard. God, we ask that you move on King Center, that you restore us, you restore the community, you touch the board members, you touch everyone that's involved. That we come up with strategies and solutions for our students. We thank you that we understand that you are in control and that we will continue to fight for those who matter, students in our family. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Um, so anybody who wanna continue to be part of our efforts, we meet every Monday night at six o'clock. Um, if you leave your, if you not on our email list already, if you leave your email in the chat, we will add you to our email list. And you welcome to join us um, uh, for our next meeting where hopefully, um, if we have not got a response from SUNY, hopefully we, we receive one this week. If not, um, next Monday, we will be planning our lawsuit to go into State Supreme Court and ask um, a judge to um, do an injunction on uh, what's going on. So um, I wanna leave on a positive note. Um, it was seventy plus people in here who stayed in this meeting from beginning to end. Um, you cannot even put a, you know, look, look at that level of commitment. It's a, it's a Monday, it's, it's a nice hot day out and y'all all stayed on here. Um, it is the power of faith, the power of, you know, trusting God and uh, it is such a powerful force. And so we thank everybody for all the time that you committed. Dr. Massey, you know, and Ms. Johnson, look what y'all started. Look what y'all started.
This was heartwarming uh, to hear Keisha talking about Imagine. And um, you just hear these stories and it's so wonderful seeing parents in the community. And it's so great when we realize how old we have become because the school has now celebrate, I mean, is celebrating twenty-five years. So that's, that's good. But I love you all and thank you so much for all that you do and hopefully we'll continue to do. Good night.
All right.
You on September.
All right.
Yes.
Well, now we have our public record. Um, so Keisha and Jamal, we can now take our public record and we can package it. And just as organizers, we could take the next step uh, in the process. We will check all the boxes. We will not leave no stone unturned in terms of everything that's in our power to do to impact uh, the change that we wanna see. So we will continue along this line. Do you wanna close us out, Keisha? You wanna say anything as the parent leader in this process?
Sam, I do need to ask you and Keisha to change the date on my uh, written report.
Yeah, I saw that.
It was the twenty-second, but it was the twenty-fourth, as was repeated several times. So.
I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Keisha, you wanna be the last voice to be here tonight?
I'm just grateful, even in my ailments right now, I'm grateful for all of the support. Um, Latarsia, I wanna connect with you. Cause yeah, you one of those parents and I love that for us. I love you guys. Uh, I'm glad, I'm so happy and proud of the work that we've done thus far and we continue to do. And I'm just in a good place, although I don't feel the best. My heart is in a good place right now with this whole situation. So thank you, everyone. Um, this was awesome. I'm glad, I'm happy with the turnout. Have a good night.
And we hope you'll feel better soon.
Thank you, thank you.
Good night, everybody.